Well, I'm the first of a lot. We're out. We've got a lot going on. For till February again. I get six months off then. And other opportunities come my way. I don't have to work so hard for it. It'll be open. So you can buy back your corn all season long. Your shelf.
Five seconds. Keep your attention here real quick. We're going to start this workshop typically the historically the board chair ran workshops, chaired the workshops. Under my chairmanship, I guess you call it, I'm going to defer to various committee members from time to time that have matters before their committee relative to their committee. So Bob did the, Bob Felix, Commissioner District Five handled the matter last time. He'll handle the one today. So Bob, I'll give you all the materials here and you can, if you don't mind, you can take care of that.
All right. Thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is the second workshop to help determine if the St. Clair County, if St. Clair County should continue using the services. I'm sorry. Thank you. We have a roll call.
Commissioner Angie.
President.
Commissioner Beeden.
President.
Commissioner Trello. Commissioner Felix.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Vandabash.
Here.
Chairperson Semasko.
Here. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. This is the second workshop to help determine if St. Clair County should continue using the services of the Economic Development Alliance of St. Clair County and what form that service should look like. I anticipate that we will need three workshops. The first workshop held on January ninth was to look at any issues or problems with the current arrangement. The second workshop being held now is to discuss potential ideas and solutions to improve upon how economic development is delivered in St. Clair County. The third workshop to be held on a future date will decide what solution or solutions the Board of Commissioners want to examine deeper and move to a Board of Commissioners meeting for possible action. We are at step two with the second workshop, firming up issues presented and introducing any ideas or solutions to improve upon the current economic development arrangement in St. Clair County. At this time, I'll recognize citizens wanting to address the board. Sandra Tannahill, would you like to go first, please?
I want to make sure you guys hear me this time. My name is Sandra Tannahill. I'm Planning Commissioner for Wales Township. The ones supporting EDA had a choice to be a part of the decisions providing services offered or sought out. We unfortunately haven't always had a choice. This organization has a disregard for communities during negotiations or discussions. Local governments are not included until an application is turned into the township. After that, the situation we didn't put ourselves into is left to us. We are left in the dark prior to this application. We may say we can choose not to accept an application, but if we say no, that could be, that could proceed with a lawsuit. It could take years for a court judgment and would use taxpayer money, money needed elsewhere. While they'll argue NDAs are in confidentially, confidentiality agreements is needed and a part of the process, that procedure is only beneficial to corporates. It's hindering our decisions and transparency with our residents. Everyone in this room would expect the same transparency if it, if it affected you. Why we're in this dilemma today. EDA policies are closed-door meetings that board members, including past county commissioners and current officials that have brought townships names into conversation, sending companies our way with no regard to us. They don't even attend public meetings in the majority of our townships. When they have our attention and we ask for answers, they hide behind supposed confidentiality agreements. These agreements only pertain to whom they don't want to talk to, as we witnessed. It makes no ethical sense that elected officials that are paid with taxpayer money are sitting on the EDA board, board and are able to be shielded with an NDA or a confidentiality agreement and not subject to FOIA. It should not matter what building they're sitting in, regardless if it's the township hall, county building, or the EDA building. They're still there representing their municipality and the only reason they are invited is on that board is because they are officials. Those same board members are making decisions with EDA. Those same officials get a vote on these projects locally and through county, including tax abatement. Just the fact that the townships are not getting answers and submitting FOIAs for answers from an organization the county says they've been dependent on for economic development, which is publicly, publicly funded, is a concern. Our FOIAs, by the way, are replied with, they are not subject to FOIA, so don't need to be answered. Is there a solution? Seventy years with the same politics, NDA contracts, unethical behavior, selective transparency, and the part pats on the back need to stop. If they did a full overhaul, I would still wouldn't trust them to abide by their word or signatures. This non-governmental organization that has been given this preeminence of power needs to be reined in or cut loose. The trust is gone. I've heard this comment on this board. How many times does it take a company need to screw up before you find a different solution? Thank you for trying to find a solution.
Thank you, Sandra. Next, Dawn Nowicki, please.
My name is Dawn Nowicki. In December of 2023, January of 2024, I filed a recall petition for Jeff Bone. The petition was accepted. Jeff challenged it, and I believe that went past my deadline to be able to move forward with it in collecting signatures. The purpose of filing my recall petition was his forced development of Twenty-Six Mile Road. He refused to listen to the people. They spoke repeatedly. They did not want it, but Jeff continued to find, look for outside sources, so we moved forward with recalling him. I understand that Jeff was part of, and he may still be, part of the EDA, and it was his purpose, or he saw it as his purpose, to bring in, as he spewed many times, tax dollars and jobs. But the one thing missing from that formula is the human formula, the human part of that formula. He never looked at whether the communities were welcoming this development. He never looked at talking to the people of the communities to see what they were willing to accept, how, explaining to them how it was going to change their community. None of that was looked at. It was, he knew better, and this is what was going to be done. The EDA continues to do that. Before they did it behind Jeff Bone, because he was a member of the Commissioners, now that he isn't, they're trying to move forward without him. Well, I think the people spoke pretty clearly in August of 2024 that Jeff's actions were not acceptable. And what the EDA has been trying to do in our communities with our elected officials that represent us and having them sign NDAs and keeping that information from the voting population, that, that's not right. They need to either start working with the community or the community is going to continue to say enough isn't enough, the EDA needs to go. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Next, Angela DeFrain, please.
Hello, Angela DeFrain, Fort Gresham. Thank you guys for what you're doing, to look into this, to try to find a possible solution. And that's what tonight's meeting is about, is possible solutions. I think you've heard from a couple of residents that have already kind of, you know, public involvement. Non-disclosure agreements with elected public officials should, should not happen. If a community doesn't want a project, it shouldn't be encouraged in their community. The only way you can do that is to reach out to the public, have the public involved. Some of the reasons why they thought non-disclosure agreements were important, one of the things that they said, I believe Dan Casey said, was, you know, competition, you know, it kind of staves away competition. And my question with that is why? We've got a great community. We've got educated people. We've got skilled workers. Why wouldn't we want multiple developers to compete to be in our community? Then maybe we're not going to have the bottom-of-the-barrel developers like some of the developers that our community is dealing with recently. So, you know, I really, if public officials are involved, I think that's important, but I believe they should be able to share everything with their communities. We just, we, we don't need non-disclosure agreements when it comes to economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Libby, please. Libby Pearl.
I think that EDAs could have a role in attracting projects that benefit communities, but their efforts must support local master plans and the vision of county residents. Our current EDA is a quasi-group. It is not subject to county oversight or taxpayer scrutiny. If you want to keep an EDA, I think that the best direction, in my opinion, is to make the EDA, EDA part of the County Metro Planning Bureau and, you know, but I understand that that's easier said than done. If you choose to continue to fund them as a quasi-entity, there should be a detailed contract with specific requirements that they have to meet in order to qualify for their funding. Just briefly, to me, very important be that they maintain a public transparency site. It has to be kept updated, it has to be made public. I think that the Board of Commissioners should be able to hire and fire their CEO. I'm actually even thinking about some oversight and regarding membership. There should be a monthly status report submitted to the board. No NDAs, it's not even worth discussing. I think that they have to focus on recycling blight in already deforested properties. I don't think we should be going after properties because it's cheap and convenient. What, we have to do what's best for the community. I don't, I don't think that we should be doing this new EDA building at that site. I realize, you know, it's an opportunity to clean it up, brownfield project, et cetera. I think that they should be renting space in Blue Water Convention Center and picking up some of the cost overruns there. I think that would solve two problems. If they remain a separate entity, they should be given mandatory thresholds for cash flow and fund balance, because I'm, you know, concerned, not that they're doing anything dishonest, maybe they just need a little more help. The EDA should be prohibited from actions that pit taxpayers and local businesses against each other. And that's a little bit of what we saw at the last meeting, and I found that very troublesome. There was a little bit of a mindset of disrespect and indifference towards the community, as evidenced by a few statements at the last meeting. But I think that this is a small subgroup of the EDA. I don't think that's all of our business owners. In fact, I've never been treated disrespectfully by any business owner, except maybe that one who was up here prancing around. I think that some of those people who spoke would look out at this gallery and view this gallery as inferior to them, and that was very troublesome. That's what I saw watching from home. I think this can be mitigated, mitigated by cultivating a more aware membership that participates in some form of annual training to make sure that they stay in touch with what's going on in the community. Oh, I'm out of time, but I wanted to mention Bill Levens. I know, have known Bill Levens for years. I applaud him for having courage to stand up against Dan Casey. Plastics is like the cockroach of manufacturing. The only way that plastics is, the only way that plastics is going away is if this world ends. We gotta go back to cultivating that.
You gotta wrap it up.
Okay. So, thank you, Bill Levens. Bob, let me say hello.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I recently went up to Yale and I, and I, and I was told by the mayor of Yale that a few businesses actually are held by the EDA even all the way up there. So my concern is if we were to cut off funding for the EDA, that it could harm businesses even all the way up in Yale. And that's just concerning because just, just in the sense that we, as, as a county, we should try to look at all the county, even those that are, that benefit from the EDA. So I guess then my question is, if we shift the funding from the county to the city, can cities afford it? Could the city of Yale afford the EDA services if St. Clair County were to just completely shut it off and says we're not funding it anymore? Maybe a solution to this, if, if, if people, if, if the board here is absolutely committed, they don't want to fund the EDA anymore, maybe we could consider a slow gradual process as opposed to a suddenly just flip the switch. Because it would give cities, townships, villages, time to prepare for when that happens, and then they can gradually shift their budget, cities, townships can gradually shift their budgets over time so that they can account for how much they want to fund the EDA, if that's a route this board wants to go. I think sometimes when you do a sudden change and you do something very drastic, it can cause unintended ripple effects that can affect the county that, that we don't realize. So I think if we make a decision, sometimes slow gradual change is preferable if we're going to make a change. Because if you just shut it off, then a lot of cities, townships, villages, communities that do, that are held by the EDA are going to, it's going to be like a sudden shock that they're going to have to account for. So like the city of Yale, for example, if St. Clair County were to decide, yeah, we're just going to completely cut every, all funding off, we're not going to fund the EDA at all anymore, we just do that, like that, then the city of Yale and other communities that that are held by the EDA, then it could have to make a decision of, okay, well, this is, this is sudden, wow, okay, I don't know if we have to prepare, I mean, we have to look at our budgets now. I mean, I mean, I mean, that's a sudden shock, whereas I feel like if we did gradually over time, I feel like that would be preferable, because then the city of Yale could go like, well, we need to give some time to prepare. St. Clair County says they're not going to, they're, they're going to go a gradual process, it's going to be like a year. Maybe we can, we can begin more kind of parent and figure, okay, how much funding goes to the EDA, how much doesn't go to the EDA? I just think it's important to remember that, you know, the EDA is going to affect a lot of counties in St. Clair County, a lot of communities in St. Clair County, both negatively and positively. So maybe if you did a small gradual shift over time, maybe it would minimize the harmful effects, minimize the benefits, minimize the harmful effects of cutting off the EDA would do in many communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tyler. Do any other citizens have a comment at this point? If you'd state your name, please, for the record.
Renee Abner Todd. I'm the owner of Renee's Incorporated, Chelsea Heavy Equipment Repair and Cure LLC.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a word you said.
Renee Abner Todd. I'm the owner of Renee's Incorporated, Chelsea Heavy Equipment Repair and Cure LLC. Okay, I'm here because I hear a lot of criticism of what you guys don't do, and I want to confirm and I want to talk to you about the things that you've done that have benefited software companies and other companies that belong to the underground and here in Port Huron. There's a lot of my cohorts, as well as I, that have gained funding from the EDA, and I want you to hear what that kind of funding has done for us. My startup, I started in 2018 and out of Ann Arbor. I brought that company back to here, to Port Huron, and while I was here, I've contributed $65,000 of money towards patents, $350,000 in development of software that will bring in probably close to $30 million to the city. The EDA helped us with $14,000 of those patent funding. Now, because of it, I was able to gain three patents in the last three years that will help secure our, our software developments for the next 10 years, and I have two patents already still pending in the other two products that I want to bring to the city. This is evaluated at a $250 million investment in the city, and it's coming primarily out of our pocket. The funds that you guys gave us helped save us to be able to gain those patents in the last run, because I was becoming exhausted in the amount of money that I personally funded in these projects. And I want you to understand that even though it's only $14,000, that gained us the leverage that now we will be able to use against the governmental changes that will be done in this nation that will help software companies, independent software companies, compete against those giants. And if you continue to go in the route of thinking that your funds aren't helping or your funds aren't able to advance the city in a way that won't stunt the city with overgrowth and be able to keep the city as small and as beautiful as it still is, I am here to challenge you on that and say that you are wrong. And I would like you to reconsider at least investing in software, new technologies, Wi-Fi improvements, and also communication improvements within the city, because that will help the city stay and keep pace with the global world. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would you mind filling this out, please?
Just for our county clerk, so we can identify the speakers. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Glass, Wales Township. If you can hear me okay. We've been here for months and months, listening to all the good things that EDA has done for the county, probably for many years, 70 years. We're not here today to rehash all the good things. We all know why we're here, why the funds were withdrawn. It's all about incursion into other townships, things that should have never happened. So I'm just going to encourage this committee to continue doing what they're doing and don't let the lines be blurred. That's why we're here. We listened to four months of residents of Fort Gresham, other townships, ethical questions on pastor from, I think it was China Township, data centers being put in one place or another, just shouldn't have happened. We all, we don't have to go over this again, but we all know why we're here. We should focus on that and continue to make sure we have a good economic management system in place. If we can't come to an agreement with this commission, this set of commissioners that are here, we're in trouble. We need to have them really look and think about why we're here and put together a good case if they're going to keep an EDA of any sort. These type of violations or ethics that we've talked about has to be eliminated. No NDAs, that doesn't have to be there. Contract in place to at least make sure both sides understand what's going on and to take the consideration for the local townships, not just the east side. We all want to have people have jobs. Most of our families work in the area or not, but, so there's a good reason for it, the EDA. But it has to be done correctly in the future before any funds are released, and if they are, it has to be to an organization that understands why we're here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to address the board? Okay, are there any comments from commissioners at this point before I read emails from some of these citizens?
I've got an email that was sent to us by the Ira Township supervisor. He asked us to read this into the record at the last workshop, and that did not happen. So I'd like to do that now. Dear Board of Commissioners, the primary goal of the Economic Development Alliance is to retain existing jobs and create new, well-paying jobs that facilitate employment growth and provide a stable tax base. In Ira Township, the EDA has succeeded in these goals. Since 1999, Ira Township has used the services of the EDA to facilitate growth here. Over just the past two years, multiple projects in Ira Township have been very successful. A single-story warehouse building constructed in 1976 in poor condition and involved in bankruptcy proceedings was rehabilitated to not just increase taxable value, but to provide 30 new jobs to our area. Additionally, an existing industrial building is increasing its warehouse area with the expectation of seven new jobs for our residents. In both instances, the EDA worked closely with the property owners and township officials as a team to help make these projects happen. Through EDA's dedication, Ira Township was able to secure 35 or more new and better-paying jobs in our township and increased tax base for itself and St. Clair County as a whole. It is not feasible to expect only residential growth to manage increased costs to run a government. Commercial and industrial growth is essential for the financial well-being of the county and our township. Ira Township needs to know that it has the EDA to work with to achieve growth goals and income. Our residents expect services which cannot be funded by only a residential tax base. Ira Township continues to send business interest and inquiries to the EDA for help in relocation to our township. Just last week, we received an email of interest from a business that would like to set up a second location here in Ira Township. We immediately responded to this request, providing contact information for the EDA to assist with this potential new business. Ira Township supports the St. Clair County Economic Development Alliance, and we expect that our county commissioners- that our county commissioner, David Rushing, and his fellow commissioners to continue to support the EDA for the betterment of both Ira Township and St. Clair County. Sincerely, James Anders Jr., Ira Township Supervisor.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have a comment at this point?
Got a couple things. Normally what we do is letters, because we all got, I got a ton of letters here, if we wanted to read every one in the record. Normally, we just put them into the record and receive them, and then they're available to read. So if we were to read every one of these letters that were sent to us, but that's up to the option of the chair who's running the meeting, there might be specific parts of individual letters we want to address. After this letter was received, I did call Jim Anders, and I've talked to him, that is one of the townships I represent. And he does not attend any of the meetings. He is part of the, one of the municipalities of the nine, which Dan Casey said there is currently nine, possibly 10, that are part of the EDA. We have 32 communities, and about less than a third are involved with the EDA directly as being partners on them. Jim Anders wasn't aware that there were no public allowed at the EDA meetings. He also was not aware of NDAs, and he was against that. He didn't support that, at least when he talked to me on it. So there's some things in here that definitely I think we can, and we're gonna be talking about it, about the EDA. I think they have a lot of tools in their toolbox. I really hope we can get it worked out to where it's beneficial to the EDA and the county. The 70 years, of course, that's 70 years' history. I think the NDAs and stuff has come into conversations in the last few years. So I wouldn't condemn 70 or 65 years of it for five years where we haven't been being inclusive with the townships. What he also mentioned in here is that they had a business that contacted them, and that's what I would like to have happen. The townships or municipalities get contacted at the get-go, and then they can work with the EDA. And that's what he said here. That's great, if we could do that, and hopefully we can get that worked out soon. I got other stuff, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, somebody. I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
First, I'll comment on a couple of the speakers here. Libby Perle was talking about these monthly reports. Commissioner Angie had brought to my attention that she'd located weekly reports that in fact have been delivered to the county administration and our former board chair on a weekly basis for a very long time, several years. And the one I looked at was quite informative, quite detailed, and exactly what I think Ms. Perle's talking about. And I tried to track down where they, I never got one. Called IT to see where they went, who got them. I called our former board chair, he indicated, yeah, he did get them, and Carrie Angie, or Carrie Hepting had also acknowledged to me that in her administrator capacity, she did receive them, but she thought they were going to all the commissioners, and they were not. They were going evidently to our administrator and just the board chair, and then to townships. So a lot of the townships were getting them. I know Bob Lewandowski said he was getting them, so there is that piece of it. And what I suggested was that those types of reports, they still continue today, they may be made part of this new committee we formed for community economic development as an information item and attached, it would become archived into our video system, and people could look at it. And that'd be another way to get that information out. So I'll just point out that for Libby, so she knows we did that. And Mr. Glass spoke, he talked about focus on the real issue. And before you leave today, if you're still here, I've got something I'll give you. I sent a communication off to Jonathan Hogan of the Times Herald a couple of weeks ago because he was soliciting comments evidently on some article he wants to write. And, you know, I've been around a very long time, because I'm very old and wore out, and I've dealt with newspapers a long time, and I got advice from a now federal judge many years ago, was prosecutor, that when you talk to the newspaper, if you can, put it in writing. If you can't, answer the right question and say the same thing three times, they might get it right. And not that they're all bad, but I want to make very careful the point that you made on the focus here. The question is not, is economic development good? It certainly is. It is not whether it should be continued. It certainly is. It's practices of, that have brought you citizens here and have changed the elective background of this commission that we're addressing quite promptly, by the way, to see if we can't straighten that out. And we did have a meeting, Bob will talk about that, with EDA Executive Committee and Dan Casey, that was very open, very forthright, and was positive in the sense that we understand, I think they understand, their corporate piece of it. To me, what I was sensing here is the allegiance of the EDA is to the corporate mission, which is profits and development and developers and all that. There's another piece of it as elected officials, that is the public, that is transparency, that is accountability, and that is participation. And that's what we're trying to balance out here. And quite frankly, I'm only one vote. If we don't balance that out, my vote's gonna be very clear. I'm the kind of guy that I figure out what I'm gonna do, and I do it. So if they can't come to terms with what, and I want to be open-minded, but not empty-minded, I want to do this in a way that's thoughtful and deliberate. So that's what this board, I think, is really trying to do. And I commend Bob for taking this on in the three and a half hour meeting, in this meeting. I don't want to take too much time. But first, Mr. Glass, the focus issue is absolutely correct. And then the contract issue, I'm an attorney, I've dealt with contracts, I've litigated contracts, I would shy away from a contract, I would do more of a memorandum of understanding that we produce and they sign off on, that this is what you're going to do in order to continue funding. No contracts, no lawsuits, no litigation, no depositions. Do these things, or we'll just go our separate ways. Well, that's just, the reality of it is, it gives you all the marbles. It gives you the handful of aces, because you can say, look, but you've gotta be fair, and you can't be an ogre, you can't be a bully. We gotta say, and I'm trying to wrap my head around, their need for some confidentiality at some initial stages versus when public action starts taking place, when you start getting the secret handshake, the backdoor deal, those are the things, the dark side has to stop. And if we can do that, I think it is gonna be a tremendous benefit, you know, to the whole community. So the four things I pointed out was policy and procedure that assures the board has some method by which we can direct, control, or sign off on what direction, what development comes, where it goes. A policy that defers to local townships and municipalities, that if they don't want it, you're not gonna cite it there. I don't care if the governor wants it, I don't care if President Trump wants it, if Kenoke Township doesn't want it, it's not gonna go there. The third thing was amendment of the bylaws to meet the intent and purpose of the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act. Now, the civil and criminal penalties would not apply, because we have a corporation counsel opinion, and I've known this before the opinion was received, that they are not subject to those provisions. But they can voluntarily do it, and they can risk loss of funding if they don't. They find some way to provide accountability, transparency, those kinds of things. Whether it has to come through the board, if we have, they're talking about giving us board seats and other things, if we ask for it, you're gonna give it to us, and we're gonna, we're not gonna sign the NDA. We're gonna do what we need to do with it. And then the last piece was the NDA thing, and I've looked at this for a couple of years now, and I've had discussions with Dan Casey and other people, and developers and other people. I just, I just know, and my sense of my obligation to the public is that I'm not going to contract myself to not disclose information that comes to me as a public official, period. That's just the way it's gotta be. I don't care if it's a 501(c)(3) for delivery of health services, or services for elders or whatever, you know, it's gotta be open. If we're gonna participate in my capacity, it's gotta be open to the public. So we gotta, we gotta find a way around that. So those are the things I did. The last thing I'll say is, you know, I started looking at this back in August. I knew it was coming. You know, I get way ahead of things. I knew that there'd be big changes coming with EDA because of what we saw that happened that resulted in the election results. And so I started looking at different models. And the corporate model's not the only model. There's, in the state of Michigan as we speak, there's at least four 501(c)(3)'s that are community development organizations, they're not corporations. And their 501(c)(3)'s, the one I'm looking at particularly is in Northern Michigan, is the Northern Michigan, Northern Lakes Economic Organization, or they call it, and it's four counties, Emmett, Charlevoix, Antrim, and another one, and they contract with Michigan State. And the stuff they do is phenomenal. It's, they do all the things our EDA does, I don't want to cut our EDA out, but when somebody tells me, and it's been said multiple times, you can't possibly do this, well, you tell me something's impossible. That's just a tremendous motivator. So I don't want to go there, but there's information I'll pass on to the other board members, and it's substantial. I've been doing this for probably four months now, and it's really coming together. I want to share that with everybody to look at, to say, let's find a way to blend that into the community piece into our EDA, so it has this corporate mission, but has the balance of the community development, and try and make that fit. So that's my motivation, and I think I've said enough, so.
Okay, before we get more into discussion, I just wanted to touch on a few emails, and I'm not gonna read the entire email. Greg Abbey, who's the supervisor Cotterville Township, sent the board a very lengthy email. I've highlighted some of the things. He says that the goal in their area is protecting farmland and agricultural activities, and he goes on to say that at no time has Cotterville been a member of the private EDA, nor does Cotterville Township have any interest in joining or support for the St. Clair County EDA. The recommendations had, or that he's seen do not fit with the values of our community, nor do the objectives align with our needs. And then he goes on to itemize some of those, but as the new supervisor of Cotterville Township, he is not in favor of joining the EDA. Dan Casey submitted an email, which we will touch shortly, about some of the things that were accomplished at a meeting that we held. Carol Miller also submitted a very detailed email talking about NDAs and secrecy and what it can lead to in the community, and I'll touch a little bit on that when I discuss a little bit more as to potential solutions. So at this point, let's get into what has been proposed as solutions, and I'll just touch briefly from...
May I?
I'm sorry?
May I?
Certainly.
In the interest of transparency, Commissioner Samasko did send an email to us all earlier this week, to which I responded, and I want to make sure that that response is read into the record and that you are all aware of how I responded. If I may?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I'd like to address what Commissioner Samasko said. First, any effort to make the EDA subject to FOIA will not be enforceable in court. In other words, let's say the EDA agrees to be subject to FOIA. Then let's say a person submits a FOIA request to the EDA, which it denies. Then the person takes the EDA to court to complain they are not complying with FOIA. Or, let's say a businessperson investigating land in our county challenges the FOIA release of his confidential information in court. Since the EDA is not legally subject to FOIA, the court will not force it to comply and may stop it from doing so. This means any statement by the Board of Commissioners or the EDA that they will make themselves subject to FOIA will be illusory or fake. Second, I do not think it wise for the county to tell its townships and cities what they can do with their property for countless reasons. One of the primary complaints I'm hearing revolves around the laudable goal of townships and cities maintaining local control over their own land, which goes completely by the wayside if the county proposes to insert itself between a prospective land buyer and a township or city. I sure do not wish to be in a position to tell a township or city that since I, as a county commissioner, do not approve of a proposed business, then that's just too bad for that township or city. Isn't that exactly what many are complaining about, the state doing with Public Act 233? Not to mention inserting another layer of government into local affairs which is wrought with folly. See, for example, the Department of Education, just for one example. I look forward to discussing these things in more at our remaining two workshops. I just wanted to make sure that that was in the record. At this time, I'd also like to move to modify the agenda, to add a vote, to release Gary Fletcher's opinion on the Freedom of Information Act.
Do we have a second?
I would have no problem with that. I don't know, is that something, can we check with Gary first? I mean, is there some proprietary issue there? I don't know.
I checked with Gary. There's attorney-client privilege, and he said we'd have to vote to release it to the public.
He had no problem with that.
Correct.
Okay, I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion?
I'd like to talk to Gary Fletcher myself. I believe a lot of what you said, I think your intent is correct, but the legality is wrong. And I know you're an attorney, but I don't think any one of us were trying to inflict the county taking over any local control. I don't know any commissioner that's done that. So I think that part of your letter was incorrect.
Just to paraphrase Fletcher's opinion, this is very clear, and it was evident long before I saw that opinion, I knew that was the rule, that the EDA is not subject to FOIA, is not subject to Open Meetings Act, because they're not created by state statute specifically, although they're allowed by law, and they're not funded primarily by, you know, government funds. So his opinion was that it doesn't apply. But I wanted, I tried to be clear with Carrie, maybe we hadn't communicated well. I'm not saying that they, anyone would be able to use those acts. I would say the intent and the purpose of those acts was transparency. And with a memorandum of understanding says you will be transparent, you will be accountable, or you lose your funding, I don't need to go to court. I don't need to have somebody, I don't want to go to court. I'm just gonna say, you didn't do this, your funding's gone. So I wasn't talking about the civil and criminal provisions of those statutes applying unlawfully to others. No, they don't, I agree with that. I was saying, we condition our funding on being transparent and accountable. That we can do.
Any other discussion?
Yes. We did receive two letters from Wales Township, Liz Masters, and she has a legal opinion, and I believe Gary Fletcher supported that, if I read his letter correctly. In regards to federal funds that go to the EDA, those kind of funds are FOI-able, if I read his letter correctly, that he forwarded back to us.
I'd like to have the opinion released.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. It doesn't hurt to...
My comment, if I could, I would like to release the opinion, but if it comes to the vote, which it sounds like I would vote no tonight in Mr. Fletcher's absence, I have hearsay of what you said he has said, I would like to hear it from him.
It's interesting, because I don't know, as lawyers, maybe you know Carrie, you know, in workshops, you know, is this, we've never really passed motions and things at workshops, but I mean, honestly, I don't know if we can or we can't. I don't have a problem doing it, but as long as the procedure's correct, you know, we're not, we're supposed to be more of a, you know, town hall, educational, this type of thing, the, you know, if we can do it, we're in a meeting, it's a public meeting, it's noticed, it wasn't on the agenda as such. Just so long as it meets the, we can do that, I have no problem. If you want to take a vote to do it subject to maybe corporation counsel telling us we can't under the procedures, then we can do that, maybe you could do that.
Certainly, certainly. I'll amend my motion to reflect what Steve said.
We have to withdraw the second first, I believe?
Well, no, I was asking you to amend your motion, and I...
But we have a second on the existing motion, so we'd have to withdraw the second, then she could amend it.
This was my second. I'll withdraw the second, remake it, that I approve of.
Commissioner Angie, do you want to restate your motion?
I'd like to move to release Gary Fletcher's opinion on the FOIA law when Gary tells everybody that he's agreed to do that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
I think if this is at the committee, I think we got committee next week, just be a week. I'm probably gonna support this, but I wouldn't want to talk to Gary Fletcher, because I think I'd support it.
Well, it's gonna, if it passes, it's gonna make Fletcher have to say that he's the parliamentarian by reason of our bylaws. He's officially the parliamentarian, we really don't have one here. And so long as we can do it under parliamentary procedure, we're gonna do it. That's, I think, the motion she's saying.
Okay, any other discussion? Can we have a voice vote, or we need a roll call?
Voice vote, fine.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. At this time, any other discussion from commissioners, or I'll go down my list on a few other items?
I've got three things, because you're gonna have quite a bit. One is on the NDA legality, and being a previous township supervisor, the statutory duty of a clerk, and Angie can probably state for the county part, but the clerk is the one that takes all the official documentation. If an NDA is signed by any trustee or supervisor, that information, I believe, has to be required to be part of the township information. So I want Gary Fletcher, I want to ask him on that specifically. So any confidentiality, or any agreements that are made, that's why I, I'm gonna be pretty tough where I'm gonna go with this, if NDAs and confidentiality, or I believe that any type, you have an agreement like that, that has to be filed with the municipality, with the clerk, and then that would be distributed by the clerk to the board of trustees. There was two things earlier that potentially, that the commissioners would fire the CEO. I would never support that. They're a private entity. We need to trust them to do what they do, and get them a working relationship to where it's a good partnership. And hopefully we get there. I think we can. Also, I would not want to micromanage their finances. That isn't what we're gonna be doing. I don't, we don't micromanage the sheriff, we don't micromanage the judges. I don't think that's a good practice to get into. I think Dan Casey's running the EDA, he's got his board, and they're gonna make their own decisions. They don't need to have us looking over their shoulders, making the decisions on how they're gonna be running the EDA, their finances there. We're gonna be looking for them potentially to do the economic development for St. Clair County and represent whoever wants to be part of it. And we have many things that have come up on how we can go forward with this, so those are the three things I want to address.
Question for Dave, are you gonna communicate that to Fletcher to answer your questions, like an email or something, or?
I could do that.
I mean, that might be the way to do that.
For others to discuss further, I want to cover something here to bring the board and the public up to speed. There were several meetings, a couple of meetings that took place. I met with Dan Casey, and thank you, Dan, on January 24th. We had a good meeting, couple of hours, and we talked about some of the potential issues[1794.83] that have arisen with the public. And then Commissioner Angie, thank you, and Commissioner Samasko and myself met with the executive board of the EDA on the 28th of this month and had a very good meeting. Dan Casey's staff summarized, and I will cover some of the points that came out of that meeting. Communities may opt in or out of EDA membership and service in writing. Communities may contract for services rather than become a member. A communication and project protocol will be developed. A protocol will be developed to address confidentiality related to projects. EDA's mission statement will be updated. The county will receive additional board seats on the EDA Board of Directors. Town hall meetings will be scheduled periodically to open lines of communication with residents. EDA's weekly report will be more broadly distributed to stakeholders. A new vice president will be selected to complete Mr. Bohm's term on the executive board. And once construction is completed, the EDA Business Center, or the new building, will be available for community groups, businesses, and entrepreneurs to use for meetings, strategic planning, training, career fairs, and similar events. Now, these are just things that have been proposed. We found substantial common ground on many issues. It seems the issue that is remaining is the confidentiality, the nondisclosure agreements. And I want to offer briefly a new dimension that a business owner in Port Huron introduced to me about the confidentiality. This business owner was talking specifically about past grants from the EDA, and the business owner said there are a few other people, she wishes to remain anonymous at this point, because she's fearful of retribution. And I'll have more information at a next meeting. But what the argument was, is that without transparency as to how these grants are passed out, or indeed funds from the state, MDEC, or from the local EDA, how can we ascertain that it wasn't favoritism, cronyism, or funds directed basically to their buddies? And that is a very real concern. I've had that concern myself. With all the good things the EDA is doing, even if they are not engaging in that type of practice, have one business owner and several others are going to be coming forward, talking about that, raising that possibility, in my mind, that is a plausible thought. And without transparency, how can you ascertain, how can the public ascertain that's not happening? Any comments from the board on that, or anything else?
Just one more thing. What you brought up, Steve, I don't know if it would be a contract or a policy, but something very strongly written to where once, because every one of us is going to not be sitting in these seats at some point, EDA board is going to change, we need to have something in place that's going to outlast us, that's going to be a good working tool for the EDA if we continue with them, and also with the county commissioners. So I want something, a hard copy of something for us to go forward with.
You have to realize, Dave, that nothing, everything's going to outlast us, you know, the next, you're here for four years, but in four years, who knows what's going to happen, right? So a memorandum of understanding to me gives me the handful of aces, gives me all the marbles. I'm going to say, here's what we expect. We're giving them the money. Right now, we just write the checks. There's no contract, no grant, no nothing. Here's our dues based on the population. Well, the memorandum of understanding says, look, we're going to continue this relationship so long as you do these things. And we decide, the board decides, the seven people here decide, are they in compliance or not? If somebody gets a complaint, he says, hey, I called over and I want to know about this, they told me to get the hell out of their office, well, we can address that, because that's not transparent. We can say, you know, we can address those things. I do, Bob, it was a very earnest, the executive board was earnestly interested in continuing the partnership. They get it. They get it. They need us as much as we need them. They really do. And we can continue under that model, you know, or other models. But the memorandum of understanding, what I don't want to do in a contract, because I know what contracts are, well, provisions, and you can go to court, you can get injunctions, you can have losses, you can have just like running off on a FOIA or OMA Act violation. I don't want to do any of that. This is like, look, we're going to understand each other, this is how we're going to do it, the public's going to, we're going to satisfy the public's desire for transparency and accountability. I think it's that simple. And if we at a board decide, that's why we're here, that it wasn't working, something has to change, the public's demanding some changes, that entity's willing to make some changes, I'm fairly certain we can find a pathway to make it work, at least on a provisional basis, you know, say, okay, let's go forward and see where we go with this. Give them a chance to, give everybody a chance to straighten it out, so.
If I could, too, for the community, particularly the business community, and Tyler, you raised an issue, it is not in my mind that we will discontinue economic development, or this board discontinue economic development efforts for this community. As evidenced, our very first meeting, we established a standing board for community and economic development. And I am appointed the chair of that. So we are not doing away with economic development, we are not doing away with funding for economic development. The issue simply is how to best deliver it. And as I see at this point in my mind, the choice is grow the present EDA into a form that the public can trust and benefit from the entire public, or bring that in-house. And there, to me, there is not another option, to discontinue support and let things run wild, that is not an option. So I wanted to make that comment. Any others?
Just on the name, too, you know, attorneys, everybody, I guess, know that words have meaning. It's community and economic development. And I came across that several months ago when looking at all this stuff, different opinions are called, community development, community economic development. That's the part I want to make sure you get, community and economic development. That's what we're trying to do here, so.
Any other commissioners' comments at this point? Okay, I would emphasize that I think we've gotten past defining what the issues are. It's delivery of those services in some areas. And then the public trust, I was calling it image at the first meeting, but I think it could better be called restoring the public's trust in the EDA, the present EDA. Mr. Bohm stepping down, being he was a visible face to the public for better or worse, that may be a big step in restoring some of that trust. As far as what else needs to be determined, that still will have to be worked out. Anybody else have any comments on this board? Okay, Mr. Casey, would you like to say anything at this point? A few minutes perhaps, and we may have some questions for you, if you don't mind, sir?
Thank you, board members. And also to the people in the audience that made points and asked questions, I do appreciate hearing that. We are here to serve the public. We always have been. So I hear, I heard this in the last workshop, I heard a little bit today, too. There still seems to be a lot of incorrect assumptions. And it's not meant to challenge people. I think it's a matter of communication, okay? And so we tried to address some of those things in the points that Mr. Felix read out. So for example, we do have a protocol, we don't call it that, to work with communities on projects. We've always had that. And this notion that somehow we're forcing projects on communities is not correct. We don't do that. That doesn't do us any good. It doesn't help a community when that happens either. So we work with communities on every single project. I'm not sure that people understand that, right? So what we said we would do is we're going to write it in a formal way and share it with all the communities, and it'll also be in the memorandum of understanding. So there'll be a protocol in there that explains how and when we work with communities on projects. I wanted to touch on NDAs for just one quick second, because there was one comment that was made that I think was not accurate, but it wasn't necessarily based on, you know, well, anyway, I'll just say this. EDA does not force NDAs on communities. That's not our job. We never do that, not once. Our job is if a company that is working with us or has approached us on a project, if they ask for an NDA with the community, our job is to communicate with the community and let them know that. That doesn't mean we're trying to force them to sign it, we're not. Our job is to facilitate. So when they ask a question of us, what is your sewer capacity? Our job is to facilitate and get the answer. If their question is, will the community sign an NDA? The answer is, we don't know. We're going to have to ask them, right? EDA signing NDAs is a totally different matter, right? Because quite often, they, these companies are in a, and someone did comment on this, these companies come to us in the earliest stage of a project before they've selected a site. It's their process. It's not the community's process at that point. They're trying to make a decision on, are we going to go to Michigan? Are we going to go to Wisconsin? Are we going to go to Oakland County or St. Clair County? And are we going to go to Port Huron? Or are we going to go to Sterling Heights? So they're in the process that they've created to make those determinations. Sometimes NDAs play a role. Most of our projects do not require NDAs. I just want to make that point. And I think, Mr. Felix, you were the one that said it, or, no, actually, Mr. Samasko was the one that said it, I believe. In the last few years, we've seen a lot more requests for NDAs than we normally have in economic development. And I think that's because some of the biggest projects that have happened in the state have occurred in the last two to three years. The big projects typically do require NDAs. And there's a lot of reasons for them. I'm not going to go through all the reasons. So, you know, I think the executive board has expressed that they would prefer not to completely shut the door on NDAs, but rather they would agree to a process that has yet to be determined, that would provide for some approval before we sign an NDA. I think that's reasonable. So one example I can cite is, there was one project that came to us through a site consultant, and they asked us to sign an NDA, and they would not tell us what the project was. They wouldn't tell us anything about it. We had no idea. If we don't sign the NDA, we have no idea whether it's a good project for the county or a bad project. We just won't know. And if the answer from the board, the county board, is no NDAs, then so be it, then that's a project we're going to miss out on. So I don't think we should spend a whole lot of time talking about NDAs because they're so infrequent. But it's okay to have a process. So if we do get one in the future, we will follow the process, and then we'll make a decision based on that. And I think the county board would have an important role in helping to make that decision. So that's one thing I wanted to point out. EDA also had a legal opinion that was written in the last couple of weeks on FOIA. And in our legal opinion, they specifically addressed federal FOIA in addition to a local FOIA. And so I can just paraphrase, and I can share that legal opinion with you as well. But the federal FOIA makes the government agency that provided the funds subject to the FOIA, not the recipient. That's the misunderstanding that I think is out there. And so that FOIA does address that. I'm happy to share it with you. I think that's all the comments I had at this time, but I will say, I like the dialogue. We're certainly open to change. I've got some of the team here today, so they could hear directly some of the comments that are being made by folks. And it's important, because we do serve the community. We have a strategic plan, and there are sections in that plan that specifically address residents and communities and engagement. So in our strategic plan, that's important, that's already there, right? But we haven't necessarily communicated that to the community. So that's shame on us, right? We can be better, and we should be better.
Question, Dan, if I could, I'll start off, if that's all right. FOIAs are a big issue here, and we've heard some excellent legal arguments from lawyers, and I appreciate that. I'm looking at this from a common sense. Is there any issue at all in your mind if the EDA decided they would answer FOIAs? Let's start off, answer all FOIAs. And you advised your customers and anybody associated with you that you were going to do that. Do you see, other than operational, let's just talk legal, do you see any issue with doing that?
Yeah, and thank you for asking that question, because I did want to touch on that. So first of all, we do have a responsibility to the community, and when questions are asked of us, we will provide the answers as long as we're not revealing anything that's confidential. And we've always been willing to do that. And so an example of that that happened recently was at the last workshop, and Liz Masters publicly, you know, submitted a FOIA request to us. And so that's what prompted us to get a legal opinion on FOIA. And so the first thing we did is we responded back to her with a lawyer, a letter from our lawyer, addressing the fact that we're not subject to FOIA. We did that because it's important for our organization to protect our private status. So I want to put that out there. That's why we did that. However, I also followed up with providing her with some of the information that she requested. Financial statement for last year, she wanted some emails from us. I sent her all of the emails that she requested, and she replied back. And so I have an email from her acknowledging that the accusation was incorrect, not accurate. That's really not the point. The point is, is that when we get asked questions, we should be responding to the public with information that we can provide. And we will commit to doing that. So I want everybody to understand that we will do that. But there are times where it might be very difficult. So one of the things that she asked for in her FOIA, for example, was she wanted documentation on every grant that we've administered over the last five years. First of all, that's overly broad. Secondly, she has no understanding of what that actually entails. That's thousands of pages of documents. And that would take a tremendous amount of time and put a huge burden on us to respond to that. So I can't say that we're going to answer every question. We might ask for whoever the person is requesting the information to drill down a little bit further, so that it makes it look easier for us to get to what they actually are looking for. But we are willing to do that.
So what I'm hearing is that there is no legal prohibition. If the organization agreed to answer to FOIA, it would be an operational logistics and a time restraint, if it was beneficial. You could do that?
I could.
Okay.
And I have James Fried in my ear.
Yeah, no, I hear you. The other thing I wanted to ask, NDAs, again, we're hung up on NDAs confidentiality agreements. How far back do they go? For example, if I'm sitting here as a citizen and I want to go, boy, this Magna deal seems to be good for the community, I'd sure like to know more about it. How long is that confidentiality agreement or NDA in effect? In other words, in general, if I want to ask about something that happened a year ago or six months ago, can you explain how time may interact with that?
You're on fire tonight, Mr. Felix.
Thank you. I try.
That's another good question. It depends on the NDA, but what I've typically have seen is that they're good for one year, or until the public process starts. Once the public process starts, then things are revealed through site plans, you know, like company names, things like that. All that stuff comes out. So my point is that the NDAs are requested typically at the very beginning of a project, when it's, when the company is going through and doing their due diligence on sites, when they're trying to figure out where they want to do their project, what provides them with the best business case. And mainly, what they're trying to do with the NDA is to keep me and my team from talking. That's what they're trying to do. They don't want us blabbing out to the world that, hey, we're working on this project, and isn't this technology great, and all those things. So that's primarily why they exist. And I have seen very few instances where they asked a community to sign an NDA. In most cases, it's us, because we're the ones that are working directly on the project to get the company the information they need to make a decision.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions for Mr. Casey?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Commissioner Beeden, please.
Hi, Dan. So communication, obviously, is important, and is going to be important moving forward. Is there someone currently now on staff that would handle communication? Or is that a position that would have to be created to help coordinate these town halls, handle any potential FOIA requests, make sure that the transparency piece, the weekly emails, those things are, websites are maintained? Is that something that you currently have in place, or would that be new?
We have a marketing director who handles our communications. We currently manage three websites. We have all the social media that's out there. Anybody can go to any of those sites and look at it. You can even comment on social media, on different posts that go out. We do a monthly newsletter that people can sign up for. We send that newsletter to the township supervisors, the village managers, and the city managers for distribution to their elected officials and their planning commissions. I guess we made a bit of a mistake, so we're not perfect, obviously. I guess we made a bit of a mistake, so we're not perfect, obviously, because those supervisor positions change. And we don't always do a good job of letting the new person in that role understand that they're supposed to be distributing those. So we do a weekly newsletter. The weekly newsletter, or it's not newsletter, it's a report. We do a weekly report. We've been doing it for years. It goes to the EDA membership and it goes to our member communities. But one of the commitments we're making is if a, if a community does not completely opt out of receiving services from EDA, we can send it to them as well. But what, one of the things we talked about is, is approaching all of the communities in the county and asking, do you want to be a member? If the answer is no, do you want occasional service from us? If the answer is no, and they don't want anything from us, then we're not going to do anything. We're not going to bother them. We're not going to send them any emails. They won't get the weekly report, anything. But that's their choice, right? And we're not trying to force it on you. It's not like we're trying to hide anything, but we're trying to honor, you know, if you, if you don't want, truly don't want us working in your community, then we, we won't. We won't send you anything.
Thank you. Don't pick up the garbage, in other words, if I go back to that. Any other commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Semasko.
You know, Dan, I do appreciate, I've been talking to you now more in the last eight, nine months than I have in probably 10, 12 years. And we've had some frank discussions and, and I don't claim to be the brain trust for investment or any of that stuff. You know, if I can't walk on it and hold it, I, I really don't feel I own it. So, but on the issue of, of people coming here, like a company, you told me, wow, we had Frank come, what's wrong with people coming here and being honest, what they want to do in our community? Why can't they tell us that? Oh, they don't, they're not going to do that. Prices will go up and the cost of money. Yeah, but then the landowner gets it. The guy that I live next to gets the extra money because, you know, so I, I struggle with that. And then to me, you know, if someone's going to come here in the dark of the night through a back door with a secret handshake, I don't want them. They're just the bad people. That, that's how I think. And I'm trying, really trying to come around to your perspective of initial conversations and initial citing and all this stuff. So that's what I'm personally struggling with. But I, I have a question on your, your comment, you know, we don't, we don't have people sign NDAs or don't force people to sign NDAs. Every executive board member signs essentially an NDA or confidentiality agreement, correct?
Every board member of the EDA?
Every, every EDA board member, executive board member?
No, every board member.
Every board member.
Which includes the executive board.
Okay. So all your lawyer, lawyer board members?
They sign an ethics and confidentiality agreement before they take service on the board. And that's because we talk about confidential projects at the board level.
And, and that is in a sense, is in a sense a confidentiality agreement?
Yeah, basically, we don't want them learning about things in the board meeting and going and telling their neighbor.
They're not going to disclose information to come in contact with your agency, correct?
Correct.
And then you have the St. Clair County chairman of the Board of Commissioners on that very board for years.
At his choice.
Well, and that's fine. It's his choice. You know, I get that. It's his choice, but I want it to be your choice because you're leading that company. You can't just say, hey, bring, not me, man, hey, somebody else. No, it's you. You are going to be the heart and soul and lead this community. If you're going to, quote, we're going to reform how it's done, I want, I want you to think maybe kind of like I think. No, Jeff, you're not doing that. That's not right. Not, yeah, go ahead and we'll just look the other way. No, stop. You know, so that's, that's the problem I have. So the NDAs, I've really struggled with it. I'm trying to find a path forward on it. We're going to, I think we're going to crack that nut because I've been very able in my career to, to handle difficult conceptual things and find ways forward. But the other thing, you know, on the issue of the money, you know, do you agree that when the Economic Development Alliance of St. Clair County accepts $310,000 or $20,000 a year plus in-kind services, Corporation Council, you know, planning, all the other stuff, you know, lots of public money, don't you agree, wouldn't you have to agree that when you accept that money, you accept the responsibility to be accountable? And you accept the responsibility to allow true civic participation? I mean, do we agree on that or not agree on that?
We have always understood that there's accountability. And that's why we do things like an annual report where we're reporting back to the community on the results.
I'm not just talking, yeah, I'm not just talking about.
I know that.
An accountant running a, a formulars. I'm talking about so that you really feel that the community, like to say, whatever, the 26 mile road, the, the fervor we got, whether it's EDA or not EDA, you know, it's economic development. I mean, you see what I'm trying to get at is, is to get the EDA to a sense where they, they, they welcome the public and if there's something the public's pushing back on because it changes the very nature of their home, that maybe we're not going to do that, even though it's a wonderful corporate agenda, a wonderful way to make money and profit and develop. Is there, is there, you think there's a path forward that we can get the civic piece of it and, and the corporate piece together where we can, where we can continue our partnership?
Yeah, I absolutely do, right? And, and so I can give you some examples, and I know you probably don't want me to stretch the meeting out, but I could give you some examples of where we've worked with communities and it was a no result, right? At the end of the day, and we're fine with that.
I, I only see what's come to this board. I mean, I've been on this board since 2007. And there's times when the same four people show up and if somebody else shows up to go and say, who's that? Oh, that's not like that anymore. There's a lot of people and a lot of issues and, and the economic development was a big one. Landfill was a big one. You know, Health Department was a big one. There's a lot of, a lot of things. Public's really getting plugged in and that's what we're trying to respond to. So you don't have to go into examples. I, I know you do. You know, you had the ones in K-PAC. I was going to ask you how it went. You're, you were doing those. I saw, I got a flyer, hey, you're going out to K-PAC to have, did anybody show up? I mean, I was, I was fearful no one would really come. You're going out there saying, come and we'll talk to you. You know, is that effective or do they just not really, how do we do that? How do we help you do that to get the word out and get that?
Yeah, so what he, what he's talking about is we started a new program.
Coffee with?
Like a town hall.
Coffee with Dan or whatever they call it.
Yeah, something like that, right. And our, our goal was to move it around every month and have one in, in each of our member communities. And we'd also consider doing a couple a year outside of our, our member communities as well. And the idea was just open forum, come on in. If you have any questions, we can do one-on-ones or I can just address everybody that's there and we can take questions. It's mostly just dialogue, just back and forth. So we did two of them. The first one was in China Township and the second one was in K-PAC. And then we decided to take December off because that's a tough month for communities.
Were they well attended or do you think they were?
No, no.
I was kind of afraid of that because I, I've seen other things you, we've done and even like things we do, so I don't, so, okay.
I think the problem though, which we can, you talk about partnership. The partnership, partnership works both ways. And it doesn't always work that way. And we get frustrated sometimes too as a, as a staff because we do lots and lots of work to assist communities and they don't always reciprocate and, but anyway, that's, that's beside the point. So as it relates to this, what we've been asking is that communities help to promote it. Because one of our problems is we're really good at talking to companies and communities. We don't have a good way, a good forum to talk to residents. It's too expensive for us to do mailings. We're just, we just don't have the budget to do mailings across the whole county or even one community. So how do we communicate with residents? And so our initial attempt has been to ask the community to post the meeting. And then we try to go on the radio and try to do it in the newspaper as well. But so we definitely have some improvements that need to be made in how we communicate those.
Any other commissioners with a comment? Commissioner Angie?
Dan, I'm curious about other economic development alliances across the state. You've been doing this a long time. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Your entire career?
Not my entire career, but the last 25 years.
Okay. So you've had the opportunity to work with or come in contact with multiple, probably countless EDAs across the state that operate in other counties, right?
Yeah. Sadly, I've become one of the deans of economic development in Michigan. I'm not bragging, it's just the, the reality of it. So yeah, I, I've been on the board for the Michigan Economic Developers Association. That's our state association. I've been on the board of that before. I've, I've served on numerous committees around the state. And of course, me and my team have very good relationships with MEDC and, and with our partners in Region Six where we meet every two weeks. We have a meeting with all the economic development agencies. So yeah, I, I know them very well.
Is it fair to say you have intricate knowledge about how these other EDAs operate throughout the state?
That's correct.
Is there any other EDA in any county throughout the state of Michigan that operates without NDAs?
Not to my knowledge.
Is there any other EDA in any county throughout the state that has voluntarily made themselves subject to FOIA and never been taken to court over it?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment, Dave?
Yeah, just one thing because one of the three options for the communities, and I'll just pick on Lynn Township, it's out there. In your contacts and you come across companies that want to locate wherever it is, I'll just use Lynn. If Lynn was to sign you a letter saying, we do not want to have anything to do with EDA, what would you tell the company?
That's what I would tell them. And oh, by the way, one other thing. So we would tell the company that, but we would also offer to connect them to the township supervisor so they can have their own conversation.
And if I can elaborate, and I know Commissioner Angie and Semasko were both there, the hypothetical discussion would be there would be a forum or a mailing to the township clerk at the beginning each year and it would say, we want to be an NDA member, check this box, you get the full enchilada, the whole treatment. Maybe the second selection, we don't want to be a member, but if you see something that you think is sensational, call us up. And the third, if I remember my words, are, don't come around or contact us or we'll shoot you. So those three boxes should satisfy everybody in our county, I would hope, with engagement with the EDA. You remember that?
Two exceptions that I just want to be completely upfront with people. So in our business retention program, we meet with at least 120 companies a year. And those companies can be located all over the county, right? So we are, regardless of whether a community is a member or not, we still intend to meet with those companies and assist them. Most of them are members of EDA, not all, but most. So we're still, it, it's not like we're not going to be in your backyard. We're just not going to be pushing development in your backyard, right?
That's right. And that seemed to be the issue, so.
I have a question to follow up on Dave's.
Go ahead.
Dan, you know, I've really tried to also understand the relationship between the Michigan Strategic Fund and next Michigan Development Corporation. And I understand there's, I think it's called the MEDC Site Selection Database. So if the site selection database contained property in Lynn Township, I mean, who puts, who, who sets up that database on a state level? Is that you or is that the state? Who, who does that? How does that work?
Now, so there is, it's called the Zoom Prospector Database.
What's it called?
Zoom Prospector Database.
All right.
The state of Michigan essentially pays a fee and they license that, so it was created by a private sector. They license the database. Basically, it's a real estate database, right? So if you buy a house and you go to Zillow, it's the same thing, but it's for commercial and industrial properties, right? So they have the Zoom Prospector Database. One additional layer is, in, in addition to properties being listed in that database, they also use the back end of that database for all of the RFIs that are out there.
What's the backend of a database? What is that?
It means in the administrative panel that's not open to the public to see, that's where they store like all the responses from communities that are submitting for projects. Everything's done in the backend of Zoom Prospector. So, but that, that's neither here nor there. The point is, is the database is supposed to be a public-facing database that companies can use to search for properties or land that it's commercial or industrial. Now, EDA also licenses the exact same database, Zoom Prospector. It's on our website. The data that's in there comes from two places. The data comes from the Commercial Board of Realtors. All of the Realtors in the state that are members can post their properties in the database in something called CPICS. CPICS is Commercial Properties and Industrial Exchange. So basically, if a broker has a listing on a property and they're a member of the Commercial Board of Realtors, they can submit that property electronically into that CPICS database. And then on Zoom Prospector, both at the state level and on our website, that CPICS data automatically uploads every single night. So you have the latest information in there. But it all comes from real estate brokers. The economic development agencies are restricted from putting properties in there except, with two exceptions. The first is if it's a municipally-owned property, we're allowed to, to put property. We're not a listing agent, we're not listing the property, but we're allowed to post it in the database so that businesses can find it. Secondly, if a property owner approaches us and requests for us to put a property in there that's not listed by a broker, we can do that as well as long as we get their approval in writing.
And let me slow you down then. So then when your job and your desk, what you do, you can, you can go into that administrative section, you could post things in your community to attract business, right?
Yeah, we could.
You could.
Only in those two exceptions.
Just, you could, if you want. So like the Lynn Township example, do you kind of, do you actually ever like go around and say, hey, that'd be a great place for something and, you know, and put that in without like say the township knowing? Is that an issue or no?
No, keep in mind, brokers are putting 99% of the properties in this database.
So if a broker from Lynn Township has a piece of property that might be zoned with some way, he could put that out there. That's not the EDA.
That's not us.
And then someone from California sees it or wherever, Grand Rapids, hey, now they're going to call you and say, go through you to say, I want to look at that piece in Lynn Township. If Lynn Township doesn't have a, an arrangement with you guys, you know, I would imagine you're still obligated to pass information on it. I mean, is that how that works or?
So, so basically, if a real estate broker posts a property and it's in the database, we cannot delete it. We have no authority to delete it. It's not our database. We're just licensing it and it's on our website. So I think that's important. And, and one area that we have identified recently of confusion that I think some people in the community may have, which is understandable, is that on our Zoom Prospector database and also on the states, when you're looking at a property, when you pull up a property, at the very top right of that property, my picture comes up and my contact information comes up.
If it's in your region, your?
If it's in St. Clair County, right? So our, our Zoom Prospector only shows St. Clair County properties.
So then it directs that contact, anyone contacting will come right to you.
So the reason we do that is because the real estate broker is still in there. You just have to go down and you'll find the, the listing agent there and their contact information. The reason why we have our pictures at the top is because we want those companies to call us so that we know about their project and can offer to help them. So if we did it the opposite way and we had the broker at the top, they would call the broker and we would never know about the project and we would not be able to help them. We've had a lot of problems with that in the past. So in the Zoom Prospector, they gave us the ability, us in the state and anybody else that uses that database, to put our contact information right at the top. And so that's why it's there. But I think for, for residents or other communities, you look at that and you think, oh, man, Dan Casey's got a lot of properties listed. When in actuality, I don't have anything listed. I'm not a real estate broker. But my picture's right at the top because we want them to call us, so.
That's, that helps me. I just have one other comment here and we're going to, we're going to have to work through several other things, but this is something that I see personally as being an issue. As a commissioner, I am charged with providing oversight of how taxes are spent and utilized in the county. That, that's a function. I would expect to sit on the board of the EDA as the chair of the Community and Economic Development Committee. I will not sign an NDA or non-disclosure for this organization or any other. As a commissioner, I think that's a conflict of interest. So that's something we're going to have to get around because I would expect to be on that board, perhaps other commissioners. And if you sign that NDA, you're not able to provide accountability to the public. And indeed, with new bylaws that have been proposed and will be voted on shortly for our board, we would not be allowed to engage in NDAs. So this is the kind of thing that we're going to have to somehow work around. As a corporate guy, I understand the need for some NDAs and new business, and I could explain that further. But it's a showstopper for me when you have public funds and have to provide that transparency. So it's more that's going to have to be worked on. Any other commissioners with a comment?
I've just got one question for you, Commissioner Felix.
Yes.
Are you familiar with the Open Meetings Act now, right?
Yes.
The Open Meetings Act carves out exceptions for closed-door sessions for this board, isn't that right?
Yes.
Some people might see it as a lack of transparency from this board.
Yes, that's true, but that's legally required. I'm talking about ethically representing the public and the funds that are distributed. So I see that as a different thing.
On Carrie's point, I suppose, as a board, we could decide, you know what, we want to be so transparent when we go into negotiations, which is one of the exceptions, we're just going to do it right in front of everybody. We can do that. I think it's prudent to do that.
Which might not be the best thing for the community.
Right. No, I get that. So there are times when, maybe we can carve out some things like that, you know, that might fit as opposed to, you know, I get your point.
Thanks.
I would just, I just want to comment on that real quick. Like, on our board, we typically in the past didn't want elected officials on it. But when you get into townships, they would have to, you know, assign somebody to sit on the board that's not an elected official if that was the case. So how we got to where we are today, because, you know, like 10 years ago, we didn't have any elected officials on our board. But how we got to where we are today was when Bill Kaufman retired because he was on our board. He was the county's representative. And when Carrie Hepting was being hired to replace him, Jeff felt like she needed a period of adjustment. And so he talked to the Board of Commissioners and became appointed to serve on the EDA board. I always thought that would be for a period of time and then eventually Carrie would be put on the board. And that just happened, by the way. Carrie is now on our board. But over those next few years, every year, when you start assigning committees and whatever that board members are going to sit on, you continue to select Jeff to sit on the EDA board. So that's how that happened. It wasn't something we wanted to do intentionally. We actually preferred to have the county administrator on our board, but it is, it just happened, right?
Which is where we're at today. We went back to that.
Right.
Any other comments from board members? Okay. At this point then, I think we've identified fairly clearly what some of the issues are. We see some potential solutions. Thank you, Dan. And I know there will be several more meetings with myself and other commissioners with Dan Casey, perhaps with your executive board. I would propose we will have a third workshop. We're not going to set the date tonight as everybody's not here, but I think another workshop to talk about which of the solutions we want to bring to the board to move towards some type of action. Any other closing comments from anyone?
I believe any one of us could forward our concerns to our chair and get a draft of where we potentially want to go. So at least we've got some talking points to where there's a policy in effect that we can add or subtract as needed, but get some kind of draft before the next workshop.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? I'm just going to ask, is there any short public comments? As chair, I'm going to entertain that. Anybody in the, go ahead, Libby, short public comment, please. To the podium, please, if you don't mind.
Dan, I really do appreciate you stepping up. I know I've really given you the business at, you know, some meetings because I am a tough customer. One of the questions, though, that I have, Dan, that concerns me is when you sign an NDA with a company, let's say, Microsoft comes to you and you sign an NDA with them, but then we have, you know, someone from our township, like our supervisor, perhaps one of our trustees, and this is what happened with 26 Mile, message you and ask you, well, who are you talking to? And your response was, I signed an NDA, so I can't tell you. See, that's the problem that I have. Once you sign that NDA with that company, you are really representing them. You're not really representing me. And I think that that's been a big problem with the NDAs. So I don't know how to resolve it. I don't know what the practices are across the state, but I just know that I elect people to get answers for me. And I know, you know, you go back and forth, you and, you know, Dan, go back and forth. And I think Dan has done that at the behest of people like me who want to know, not that. And I also don't like the idea that, you know, people are anti-growth because that just is not the case. You know, I want you to grow plastics, you know, that's, let's bring them back in. That's what I was trying to get to, bring them back in, you know, but bring them back in to the Port Huron area where we have, you know, facilities that could be revitalized. You know, let's not use up, you know, new virgin land because it's cheap and easy. So that's what I'm hoping that you can get to. But I think that that's what we're missing with the NDAs.
Thank you, Libby.